Started off last week. Our last, I'm sorry, at our month ago meeting. We have asked members of the staff to make a presentation to the board and to the trustees on exactly what they do and what their area is. And the last one was incredible. You guys don't have to be as good as they were. But yeah, well, did you hear that? Lucas said you have to be better.
Setting that bar pretty high.
As a vaccinated person, I removed my mask.
Introduce yourselves first and then tell us what you're going to talk about.
All right, it's not a competition, but it kind of is. I'm Jennifer Sparko. I am, for the rest of this month, the Youth Services Manager, which I'll be leaving for a new adventure at that time. Chelsea Tarwater will be Youth Services Manager. So we thought it was appropriate that we tag team on this. With your permission, I'm going to turn off a couple of these lights so that you can see our screen a little better. Is that acceptable? So we obviously are representing youth services. You heard last week from collection and development management and patron services. So we're kind of following on from that. I know that one of the slides that Cynthia showed you last month when she was talking about the whole process of shelving books was children's. It's not that simple. Children's contains multitudes. We had a little trouble with our getting our program going here. Yeah. So in children's, we have basically a microcosm of the entire library. We have lots of different kinds of books. We have easy books, which are picture books, chapter books, all sorts of things. So this is a listing popping up here, and I deliberately made it look a little chaotic because this is how it happens. And then Chelsea's going to show you a little bit, kind of explain some of our jargon here.
Yeah, so we're going to go over each of these things roughly. Firstly, I want to say I have been working for this library for seven years. And so I'm really familiar with our collection and I'm really proud of it and everybody that helped make it. And the thing that I love about working with kids is that they're like infinitely more complex readers than adults are because their brains are constantly changing. They're constantly changing like genres and topics and developmental levels and all of this. So that's why our collection's kind of huge and specific and crazy.
But that's what we love about it.
That's what we love about it because kids are also specifically crazy. So we have our picture books. That's everything. Pre-readers about to, some older kids, second or third grade, a lot of your classics, Good Nightmare.
We don't like this.
We're normally pretty good at text.
Yeah, we really are. Hey.
All right, so we have juvenile fiction, that's novels, chapter books. And that goes probably up to about sixth grade. At some point, you go up into the young adult section, which is a different section. Magic Treehouse, one of our most popular. Anytime we have a second grader who comes in and they don't know what they're going to read, we send them to the Magic Treehouse books.
Such a good place to start. Judith is doing things too.
Judith.
Judith, I told you this was going to happen. There we go. Picture concerned.
I can start doing them.
Go ahead, yep.
All right. Nonfiction, I think this is our most fun section because it is huge and it has something for everyone. Oftentimes we'll have kids come in and they'll be like, I want books about science. And you're like, that is at least like 20,000 feet of books. This is one, a great way to get to know kids because you have to go out to the shelves and talk to them and grab what they want. And sometimes you have kids that come out and say, I want books that have ideas in them, and that's the best kind. So that's what nonfiction is for, is idea books.
I had a conversation with a five-year-old today who knows all the dinosaurs and proved it. It was amazing. So of course I showed him the back, he knows all of them. It was great.
So we have audiobooks in all of the categories that we just talked about. Those are either these big sets, you can see with those big boxes, they are the CDs, and they have the books with them, which is super great for struggling readers because they can mash it up and read it if they listen. And some of them just have the audio CDs.
All right, so I want to make sure I understood what you just said. Struggling readers, they're hearing it.
Yes.
While they're actually.
Yes, yeah, so they see the words as the hero.
See how that would be very helpful.
It's wonderful.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah, by all means.
When a kid comes in, do you show them how to use that or you just walk them through it and then explain?
It depends on the kid. It's pretty much what they want to do. So sometimes they want to sit down at the computer or they want to learn exactly how to do it. Sometimes they want you to take them exactly to the same book. It depends. Great, board books. These are our cardboard books. We roughly keep them organized in a vague shape with similar letters. Since they're baby books, we pretty much just put them out in bins so babies can dig through them. They're our most chewed-on books. We also sanitize them as much as possible. We took them away right before we closed for COVID.
The most bleach books.
Most bleach books. Our leveled readers, this has been our most recent project. Previously, they were just in the easy books. But these are, different companies have these leveled readers that's basically developmental reading levels. Some of them are slightly different, but they'll be like pre-readers up through like level three, whatever that means for that company. So we have recently pulled all of these books to be in their own section. They're in bins that kids can kind of flip through. And this has been really awesome for patrons because I think we have so many parents that come in all the time to be like, we need level two and we need it now. A lot easier to just point it out.
And the patrons have told us they love this. It's available in the bins.
Juvenile DVDs, very popular. We have educational DVDs. I know teachers come to use that a lot and homeschoolers. And we also have feature films that circulate really frequently. Yeah, we have so many things, teacher resources.
We have a lot of these.
This is one thing that I think we're going to work on growing since we have a lot more people teaching from home. But these are books about curriculum, books about specific subjects, books about like the philosophies of teaching, all stuff like that. I think there's one more.
There's one more. You go ahead and start talking about it. Why?
It is our foreign language section. So the majority of it are Spanish books. We have quite a few Japanese books as well. We have quite a few new Spanish books, which are kind of featured on the top of that shelf. We have a lot of elephant and piggy books that are super popular. That's Harry the Dirty Dog in Spanish. So it's not super frequently used and that's something that we want to fix in the future. I want to bring people in who want to use them.
Yeah, not long before the pandemic, we moved these and the teacher resource books to the front shelf where they'd be a little bit more obvious and accessible. And that has, that has helped, I think. People are, are able to find them and see them a lot more readily. Do you have any questions about our collection before we move on? All right, and we have a lot to Kathy. She really stays on top of ordering things and keeping things in stock and making our collection great. So a lot of what we do is programming, and that's probably what, if you've heard of youth services in the community, that's probably what you've heard of. Storytimes, you know, Legos, that sort of thing. I think we had a presentation about, about the Lego contest last month. You've heard all about that. They had over 60 kids enter and over 400 people vote in it. So I just want to give you an example. We obviously don't have enough time to go through all our many, many programs that we've had. But this is, again, drawing on before, some examples. Because our department covers from birth through roughly high school. We have a lot of different kinds of programs that appeal to, in some cases, all of those ages, like our Harry Potter live-action Clue Day. You know, parents were in on that, not just, not just even kids and little kids, but then some, like Storytime is for the little guys. So we, we have sort of, we, before the, before the pandemic, we had a lot of balls in the air and we have tried to keep as much of this going as we, as we can. So I'm going to kind of run down a little bit of what happens because when you see this wonderful program like that Lego contest, what we want is for you and the, and the community to enjoy this program. We don't want you to see all the hard work that we do. We just want you to see this cool, fun thing on the top of it. But we'll give you a little sneak peek into some of the hard work that does.
Now we do want you to see it.
You specifically, the board. So right now, Chelsea, I'm going to trade off with you so you can do this. This is going to be some pictures of some of those programs. You can flip past, let them look at them for a second and flip on past. Right now, we are raising monarch butterflies. We've tried really hard to think of things that we could do that would not put a whole group of children in close contact. So Raising the Monarchs was the brainstorm of Kathy Flaherty, one of our librarians. I know this is a lot of text and I apologize. I'm the ambassador for not putting too much text on a slide, but I just wanted to give you a sense of the amount of work that went into this. Very simple program of Raising Monarchs. So Kathy came up with the idea. We thought it was great. A very cool kind of passive program that we can do without having kids congregate in a way that would be unsafe. She started doing a ton of work. What does it take to raise monarchs? How is it accomplished? How can the eggs or caterpillars be obtained? How much does it cost? How long does it take? All those kinds of, excuse me, all those kinds of details. And from that, together, we came up with a plan. Then we needed those things. So the friends of the library, who underwrite literally everything we do, from the crayons and the glue sticks to giant monarch butterfly enclosures, came through force as always. So we bought some milkweed and we bought that enclosure. We bought caterpillars and we bought some educational kits to go with them. Then we had to get more milkweed. So people in the community rallied. Chelsea made a post on Facebook that said, "Did anybody got any milkweed?" And people, you know, volunteers, but sometimes just people in the community would come walking in, holding planters or zippy bags with moist leaves, you know, that they were keeping fresh in the fridge. It really felt like a community was helping us raise these caterpillars. It's been a lot of work because part of that research that Kathy did is the cages or the bins, they're not cages, had to be cleaned every single day, at least once a day. Of course, they have to be fed. You know, the Eric Carle book, caterpillars are very, very hungry. So we had to keep feeding them and we had to keep cleaning their cages and we had to, you know, do all that kind of maintenance that Kathy had so well researched and that we had kind of assisted her with. But it was the whole department working on it. And it was very nerve-wracking because we didn't want anything to happen to our babies. So not only is it sort of meticulous, when the caterpillars were just about, you know, half a centimeter long, it made us really anxious because we didn't want to squish them or harm them. So, so it was, it was, it, it kind of took a lot of our energy to do that. Also, we prepared educational kits because we are a library. So kids can come in and they, I think the seeds might be gone? We have some seeds from the seed library for adults who want to plant bigger patches. But there were little kits of little packets of milkweed. Kathy printed up timelines of the caterpillar's life cycle or, you know, the butterfly's life cycle, stuff about migration, coloring pages, all those kinds of resources. Because even though the kids can't take the caterpillars home, they can take the learning home. And we have some kids who come in every day just to check on them. Chelsea, you can go on and, and show some of the pictures of the, of the caterpillars. As of today, as of today at lunchtime, all but two of them have made chrysalises. So that is 23 chrysalises that we have. But this is where they started. Little bitty guys, then they've got to be bigger guys. And they're so much prettier than I expected them to be. Kids love them. They just love them. Adults love them too, but they don't look as cute in the pictures. Oh, and there's a chrysalis. There's, there's, I think that might be the first one. Is that our, that's our, that's our, our Monday guy. But we have 23 now. We still have one. We have one, I don't think, one is not doing great.
Late development.
Yeah, we have one who's not doing great, but one who's probably going to be a chrysalis by tomorrow. So I hope that you'll go back and look at these amazing, Andy's been visiting them. I hope you'll come back and visit these amazing butterflies and see some of the cool resources that we have. But keep in mind, when you look at them, hours and hours and hours and hours and hours of work that we.
And emotionally.
And emotionally. As we're cleaning their bins. And that's, and that's just a microcosm of, of all of our programs are like that. They all come with a great idea and a plan and then a ton of work and then something really cool for people to see. Do you have any questions?
I do want to share with you all that Kathy Flaherty, the young lady who was the brainchild of this, I, I have it burned in my, mind, the image of her panic-stricken face when she's like, I've got 42 babies to feed and I don't have enough milkweed. And she is getting on the local, like she's got the call out to the local parks and wrecks and she's trying to locate milkweed within the community.
Master gardeners looking for it.
Yeah, she was on the hunt.
She literally lost sleep.
She really did. She was like, there will be no caterpillars dying on her watch. How do you? Let me make some statements and then a question, okay? If, you know, we assume for a moment, which I do, that we are trying to make the library services accessible to all elements of our community. How do you schedule these things, these programs, to be sensitive to that?
Right. It's a really, it's a really important question and it's one we have struggled with, I'll be honest. You know, as, as some of you guys may know, our traditional storytimes are in the morning on a weekday when a lot of folks work. So we do have a fair number of grandparents who bring the kids, but because of that reason, we, when we were having in-person storytimes, we did have some Saturday storytimes and some weekday evening storytimes. Those, the weekday evening ones hadn't, didn't, were not getting a ton of, of engagement. And so we're, we may play with, when we, when we go back to when we play with that time. What we're talking about now is what things are going to look like going forward. Will we still, probably still have some virtual storytimes that would be more broadly accessible in addition to the in-person? You can't really film in-person storytimes because you can't, you don't want to film but so we're, that's, that's, that's something that Chelsea will be getting to make some decisions about in the next month or two, I guess. Did you want to speak more to that or that?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really made any, everything's been. So we have new decisions. But I do think we'll just keep going forward in virtual storytime. We'll probably do the same storytime that we do in person and just do it in a separate time.
Are you capturing the life cycle of a monarch video?
We have some videos and a lot of pictures of them.
Thank you for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you.
If you all haven't been in the children's department, you really need to go through it. I hadn't been there in years and started coming to visit last year. And it is truly amazing what's going on there. Always something new happening. They have the projects like this. They have toys and games that they create where the children can take them home. It's, it's a great visit for adults too. It's really fun to be there.
Yeah, I've brought my grandchildren.
This is Jennifer's second last week.
Yeah.
And she's going to be leaving us. She hit, she's going to the Girl Scouts. It's their gain and our loss. Chelsea's taking over and will do a great job. And she's done a great job so far. What, the one thing that I asked Jennifer to do going forward is next year, we want to see Girl Scout cookies.
Take it in under advisement.
Thanks very much.
Before you wrap up, could you talk to the board and share with them how you come up with some of the, the ideas and the partners for some of the programs?
Sure. You want to take that or do you want me to start?
You can start.
Okay, I'll start. All right.
You have three minutes.
Okay, three minutes. Gosh, thanks on Janey. I mean, how we come up with ideas is a very nebulous question. I think we have the great advantage, like a lot of people here at the library, of having a staff who's really creative. We spend a lot of time listening to our patrons who come in, right? We pay attention to the kinds of things they're interested in, the kinds of things they want. When we have programs, we pay attention to the feedback that we get. So that, that's often where we get a lot of ideas and Pinterest, obviously. And then, and then how we reach out to partners. Because here's the thing, you guys know this. This is a great library and people love us. So, so we have some specific connections. Kathy happens to be a member of Master Gardeners, right? We know we can always call on the friends. We have great relationships with schools. So depending on what it is, we sometimes have existing relationships that we can, that we can call on. Sometimes we have to do a little research. I don't think you guys have run into that with MiniCon. I mean, Chelsea is, right, MiniCon, I don't know if you guys are aware, that's our biggest or has been until COVID times, our biggest event with a thousand people here. That is Chelsea's brainchild. She has been running that basically single-handedly for five years, almost four years. So, so you've had, you've had to include a lot of, a lot of community folks in that.
If that was basically starting out, just emailing anyone that sounded like they might be nerdy and have a skill. So it started there and it branched out until we had kind of a routine group of people who could show us to other people.
Yeah. Once the word for something like that gets out, you can build networks. I think the key is, yeah, the key is starting those networks in the first place and then being ready to, to reach out and capitalize on them. We often start by reaching out to our staff. We have some really cool people who are connected to different businesses and organizations. And so sometimes that, that pans out. One of our popular events we used to have was Touch a Truck, where kids could touch and climb all over, you know, tractors and fire trucks and police motorcycles. And some of those are folks that we know personally and asked a favor of and they were happy to help. Any other questions?
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Very much. It's great. It's a great idea.
All right, this is my report. I was on last week, so I don't really have a report. We are starting, or my quarterly review of the funding bodies, starting next week again. And so I'll have more of an update after we talk about the funding bodies. I've expanded it to include Parks and Rec and the Chamber of Commerce. So we'll be going to all five of those different places. Okay. On Janey? Well, do we want to do this? Since she's, Liz, can we jump ahead and since you're here and I don't know if you have to leave, how's your, how's yours? Is it your son that's sick?
My daughter, she's.
How's she doing?
She's okay. It's not anything too bad. Lots of pollen and antibiotics now, so. It's the East Tennessee, it's East Tennessee in the spring. She's, she's better, thank you. Yeah, so I, I sent this. I hope you all got it. I'm, I'm sorry I couldn't be with you in person. I got here, I slid in and was like, I got a long gone. So of course, our big news, you can see all of our upcoming training opportunities that we have through the month of May. One in particular that we're pretty excited about is the Reimagining School Readiness Toolkit Training, which is an IMLS-funded grant that TSLA received through IMLS and the Bay Area Children's Museum. And it talks about, it, it provides tools and fun, fun training. You all, your youth services people could probably do this training. They're so fabulous. That made me miss youth services. But Nikki will be, Nikki was a grant recipient, so involved in a Train the Trainer program. And so we're taking that out, that training out to all of our member libraries. So we're excited about, about that. And also really interesting upcoming in-service on May 27th that we've posted to the Tennessee State Listserve. Every Door Direct Mail, which is a US Postal Service program. Pre-registration was required. They were going to send out kits for that. It's using US Census data to target specific audiences that you want to reach. And it's a particular tool that the US Postal Service is offering. So that should be a really interesting training. Of course, you all are aware, and I passed along to all of our board chair people, that the executive order allowing for electronic meetings ended April the 28th, which is why you're all there in person. I'm sorry, I can't be with you. We are also excited about the Top Grant Awards. That's the training opportunities for the public. This is, I believe, our fourth year of partnering with the ECD to offer, that's the Economic Department, Community Development, Economic and Community Development Department. So we offer those funds for paying instructors to come in and teach digital literacy courses, also hotspots and other related technology for training for the public. So we're excited. Our region received over $41,000, all the libraries in our region. And of course, Blount County participated in that. The other news, of course, we're all focused on summer reading program. The state pays for bookmarks and pencils and posters and banners and fun little giveaway items for each one of our libraries, and those have all been delivered to our libraries. We also provide training and we're going to be having a virtual summer reading conference next October. So I know you all are planning that and it's an exciting time in libraries. We're also reminding our boards to be looking towards board member recruitment. Many of our boards have members that roll off at the end of the fiscal year, which is of course the end of June. So looking at that and, and thinking ahead. And finally, another resource that the state pays for is Read Squared. That is a platform for virtual reading programs and it can be used for a summer reading program, but also for any time during the year. That is a subscription service that the state pays for, for member libraries to take advantage of. And I, I believe Blount County has as well, has an account there and utilizes that. So that's great. We are also of note for Blount County, very excited that they applied for and won one of 50 spots with the State Library and Archives for the Steve Spangler STEM Workshop, which is a free virtual workshop with Steve Spangler, who's an Emmy Award-winning teacher and speaker. And so that occurred on May the 11th and Blount County and Cleveland applied from our region and received spots. So kudos to them for applying and getting to take advantage of that training. The third page of my report is, of course, we're still excitedly talking about the new State Library and Archives building. So this is a bit more of an informational sheet with some neat links to pictures of the opening. And also, I know you all, we shared the video last month of kind of giving a virtual tour of the building. So we're quite still excited about it. And then finally, the Reads Report, the Regional Audio Book Download System Circulation Stats. I think that we have a couple more months before we gather the entire annual circulation statistics, but hopefully we'll be on par to at least meet or exceed the 608,933 CIRCs that we had as a region last year. So we will, we will be getting an influx, a little influx of funding. So hopefully here in a little bit and towards the closing out the fiscal year, we'll be able to release some of those holds. I know that'll make people happy.
Thank you, Liz.
Thanks, Liz.
Any questions? Liz, you want to touch base just for a second on the?
Yes.
New laws that are coming up?
Yes, yes. So as, as we spoke about in the April meeting, the state legislature, TSLA introduced some, a couple of bills, well, one, to dismantle and discontinue the use of regional boards. As we had, their, their duties and roles have changed quite a bit over the years. And so we're looking towards developing maybe a new model for regional connection and discontinuing the use of regional boards. That legislation did pass at the end of April, was signed into law and does not take effect until July 1 of next year. So we will continue to operate our regional boards and meet on a quarterly basis as we have been until that, until they are effectively sunset, happens on July 1 of 2022. So I think that Susan and Stephanie, of course, are your regional board representatives. And I think that Susan is up for, for, her term was going to be up this June in 2021. And so right now, I think the, the most pressing order of business, and I shared this with Andy, was the, if Susan's willing to serve another year on the regional board and just complete that one-year term for, through when those boards are discontinued. And then I've, I've spoken to Andrew. I know your regional board members, well, by virtue of being appointed to regional board, they are also considered ex officio members of the local county board. And so they hold office and vote and count towards a quorum. And I believe it's always been your practice to do that. And so you have essentially operated. to do that. And so you have essentially operated as, basically as almost a nine-member board with the seven local appointments to the Blount County Library Board and then those two regional board members to the regional board. And so we have a few counties in our region that operate that way. So TSLA is going to be offering some, some further guidance. This is all kind of brand new. So we're, we're all putting our heads together to look at some options moving forward. One of those is to potentially expand the local county board membership to nine members than absorb those regional positions. Another option is to use our regional folks to fill upcoming vacancies if that, if that's, and it's up to the board, of course, for, to do any of those. That would require amending bylaws. But we'll have further guidelines from the State Library and Archives coming up. But I just want to kind of put the, put the bug in your ear and, and kind of let you all know what's going on.
Thank you very much. We'll talk about this more next month and in the coming months. I missed, I'm sorry, the minutes of the May 6th meeting. And so it's in your packet, which was our meeting that we accepted Casey's resignation and appointed Angie. And does anyone have any questions about that? I would like a motion to approve minutes of May 6.
I typed it into yours.
Okay.
I was copying and pasting and I did not add Lauren into the members attendance.
Any other corrections to the minutes? Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 6? With the corrections?
I'll make a motion.
Lauren, thank you. Second. Susan, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. Okay, let's go to the interim director's report on today.
Is he reading the April minutes?
We already did it.
What is it? You all received?
There's a speech block.
Okay. So has everyone, everyone's received the do you have any questions on it?
We had a question about meeting room capacity. So could you, you know, could you speak to that more specifically?
Okay.
Let's go over the hours of operation. Page three.
Okay. What is it? So currently, we are at 57 hours of operation. We would like to continue at that level of operation for as long as we can. What is it? Mainly, the library staff has experienced a lot of internal change. And we need to just let the dust settle, see where we're at. We are doing the best that we can. You know, we're only two weeks in on assessing what our needs are, making sure that those are covered. But we are a big ship and we were moving in one direction. And now we're changing that back. And so there's lots of little pieces that we need to make sure we're connecting. So I know that it's probably not the best sounding, you know, recommendation, but I would like us to move slowly. It is, of course, always up for discussion, but I think that 57 hours is, I know that we can handle that. I know that what we're doing, that we can maintain at this point, when we go back to 70, we're going to have to look at, I believe that there will be effects on our services and programming. And I would like to be able to give you a planned description of what that looks like instead of a free-for-all. So we want to stay at 57. The, Liz can, right now, the, the region's not offering any advice on, there are some libraries still closed, isn't there?
Unmute myself. There are none that are still totally closed. No. Many of them are back open to their full hours, offering full services, and several have indicated that they will be doing that beginning July 1. So the guidance that we have offered has continually been that the, as long as the hours are not up to full speed due to COVID, then that is understandable.
In my discussions with Angie on this, on this subject, I, I was concerned with Blount County. We still haven't had a tremendous amount of inoculations. There are still some people who really need to be inoculated. I think until we get a better percentage, I, I, I'm concerned about the employees. And we are also short employees. We, I don't think we, our staff has gone through so much here at the library. We've been open almost the entire almost, almost entirely full-time. And they've done an incredible job. They just really need a rest and a break. And I don't think we're, we're hurting anyone by not going to a full-time basis. And if you'll notice on page three, under the library operations, she is short two full-times and three part-time people. And I think until she gets back up to speed, I don't think we should be pushing her. How do, how do the rest of you feel?
I think this is perfectly reasonable approach. What we do, my only question would be, how long will the state allow us? Do we have any indication? At what point were they going to say, all right, this is not COVID-related any longer? Maybe your interpretation, but it's not ours. How many other, and I'm also curious, how many other libraries in our region under their MOE agreement are open to sending out? Is that unusual? Or is that on the high end?
Well, that's, I mean, typically, our larger libraries are, provide longer service hours. Yes. Cleveland-Bradley County, I believe, is at 70 as well, or close. So there are other Level 5. We have, this is off the top of my head. I think our other Level 4 libraries are around 55 or better. So it's, I, I think it's fairly standard.
We have about, what, a year in order to convert that or not?
I don't know that. We don't have a particular date. Like I said, the only guidance we have had is that as long as the closures are due to COVID, then, or reductions are due to COVID, then that's okay. You know, not having a, a concrete date, I have encouraged my libraries to at least be thinking about moving back to, because at some point you are going to be expected to go back. So it's best to have a plan in place, I think, to, to do that.
There's a plan.
So Liz, the, the application process, if we want to file an application for, I'm forgetting the word, you know, where we're asking for that year of grace? Yes.
Okay, so now
Still in place, correct?
No, I haven't explained that to Casey and Andy because I sought further guidance on that, which is the waiver situation. Well, for this situation, the waiver is not really applicable because the waiver is allowable if there is a cut to funding across the board. So if every department, if a funding body cuts every department by the same percentage, then in that case, the funding body would be applying for the waiver. That's typically how that works. It's taken on a case-by-case basis, but I don't, I, I don't think that this is that situation because no one, it's not a situation where your, where your budget has been cut, per se.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You are very welcome.
Not across the I would recommend that this be revisited three months with an eye toward getting closer to opening up the full 70 hours. I mean, I buy the, you know, we need some time for the dust. I mean, I get all that, you know, we don't need to recover that territory. But, but it sounds like, you know, we need to get our ducks lined up to, you know, sometime this summer to come back to what we, you know, what was the previous?
I think we need to bring this up every month.
Every month?
Every month. We'll just talk, we'll just talk about it, see how we're doing.
At every board meeting, I will bring an update to see the, where the admin planning team is with what they believe that they can offer and what it looks like for us. So we will
The newspaper does a really good job of keeping us up to date on how many cases are new in the county and how many people are being vaccinated. And I think if we see a really decrease, a substantial decrease continually, then I think we can talk accordingly.
But the real issue is, according to your, your report, we have individuals who really have not determined whether they want to be full-time or part-time. And then all of that indicates additional staff.
Well, what is it? We do now have clarification on who wants to be full-time and part-time. The, we still have positions that we need to fill. And so right now, we are not fully staffed. And once that, they're fully staffed, it takes time to train them so that they're up to, to speed. And then, you know, the thing is, is guys, we were a powerhouse of programming. And it's not going to look like that. And that's not a failure. It is just, we've got, what we're going to do as departments is we're going to look at what are essential services? What are the high-quality values that we're wanting to share and highlight and bring out for the community? And then what we are going to do is we're going to say, okay, how can we make incremental steps towards that? So please don't be thinking that mini-cons back on because at least not for this year.
It is not assessed being based on, is that feedback from the folks attending the programming? Are you considering that? Is it attendance levels? Or how are you making the decisions on which programs you're going to back and others that you won't?
Well, the first thing that we're going to look at is we're going to look at what staff has, have capacity for. So we're going to probably be moving more into passive programming until staff, because right now, we've got staff who are still covering other areas. Okay? So we haven't operated without that interdepartmental mix for a year or more. And so with that in mind, we've got to go back. We've got to see who's doing what because people have moved on. We've got to identify what, you know, so there will be a time and a place where we get community input and feedback, but it may not be in these early stages just yet. But please know, I am all for getting community.
And we took a survey, what was it, three years ago? I mean, it wasn't all that long ago. That, you know, that should be a source of information as well.
It is, yes. And I think that's supposed to be done every three years, isn't it? So it may be it may be
There you go.
Where you may get information.
It can be a good timing. I would think a lot of programming has changed because of COVID. And there's probably a lot of, you know, internet programming that we need to do for folks.
And even our hours when we go back to 70, maybe this is an opportunity to look at what the community wants those hours to be so that they have buy-in.
Angie, something, as I was looking at your positions and, you know, the part-time positions, good job, by the way, reaching out to those that, you know, don't, we're not working and, you know, the report, as you put it, I think that's fantastic. As we, you know, we have the two full, two full-time positions and three part-time vacation, vacant positions. I want to just be careful with that, I guess, as, you know, something that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but as we move forward, there was, the ship was going one way. And it is something that we're empowering you to, you know, make sure that we do the most with what we have and trying to get us somewhere. But at the same time, there is going to be that position filled by whoever. You know, we're just talking about a position. And I think that's something that we do, I think, as, as Kathy mentioned, last time we met, it is something that we need to just kind of keep in mind. So as we move forward, I guess, as we start thinking about vacancies and filling positions, just be, you know, just going to keep that in mind and let's make sure that we're
Their name on stuff.
Yeah. So there's, there's going to be something that we want to empower you to fully just utilize what you have. It might be one of those things that you might need to say, okay, well, working towards those 70 hours, we could be there, but we're going to need this. And it might be one of those things that maybe, you know, just throwing ideas out there. It might be temporary positions. You know, I don't know how everybody feels, but I, I would hate for decisions to be made, a new director come here and all of a sudden have somebody to go to the same, the same people and say, I'm sorry, but we're not going to have part-time positions.
So please know, and I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that because that has been one of the things that I have been in conversations with the county HR to make sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is so that something that, someone I put in a position during the interim phase, their job is not affected by, you know, barring any huge, you know, circumstances. But also, the, the conversations that I've been having with, like Cynthia and I had conversations today about what her department needs may look like. And she was asking good clarifying questions like, okay, well, this is the direction we're going. This is, then there was the mention of the job sharing. Stephanie came and talked with me about how a job sharing program looked like. So right now, there's a lot being discussed on the table. And so I am listening to the departments. We are trying to assess what they need and what is possible and sustainable. If that makes, does that answer you?
And I think you have to make an assumption. There's never going to be any more.
Take a look at page five.
You just have to be really super conservative.
That shows you the dollars. It shows you the money that we have. It shows you what we're going to have next year.
I do want to make a correction on that page. Just in the total staffing breakout in totals, the under the current levels column, it's full-time is 29, part-time is 7, and the total is 36. It does not affect the the total budget. Because it was including people that were like Linda Marcus. She has been on our books and with us, but she has not worked the entire year. So.
And I guess just to clarify, just to make sure, you know, we did put the sustainability plan on hold. It was something, there was a lot of effort going into that.
Yes.
And, but like I said, I think it's kind of going back to, to me, it's when we met. We need to give that position, that authority, when they come to really assess that and come up with, you know, those. So it's something that like, I guess, in the interim, we definitely want to empower you to come up with those, you know, ideas and everything. But I would just want to make sure that, you know, especially if we hire somebody that has not been employed by the, by the library, that, you know, just kind of be, I guess, cognizant of that and just kind of like, keep that in mind that for some reason, especially at one point, the sustainability plan was to go full-time. Personally, I think full-time is fantastic for benefits for employees and, you know, training. However, there is a, a lot to be said about part-time. Um, however, there is a, a lot to be said about part-time as well, because, you know, some people benefit from that. However, I feel that, that's something then, as a board, when the new director comes on board, that's something that we want their, that's gonna be their project to tackle a little bit. So it's just kinda like, one, once again, um, you know, we wanna make sure that we get to seventy hours. How do we get there? Um, you know, that's kinda where we're helping with this and we are working hard and, you know, filling that position.
And the MOU, I mean, the funding bodies have been pretty darn clear, as I understand it. That there's not gonna be any more money. And so paying for additional staffing is gonna have to come out of other revenue generating sources. The friends have been clear about what they're, they're gonna provide on an annual basis. We're just so appreciative of that. I mean, so we know what that pot is. And, 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 you know, as we continue to build revenues with our rentals and things like that, that's wonderful. But I see that as a variable revenue source, not a fixed one. And so that tells us we need to be careful about making commitments to people and positions that may have to be revisited for whatever reason. Because you got a new director, you got, you know, money issues or whatever. So I would rather us not go to seventy hours than to make a commitment to somebody that we turn around and we, we live on the commitment. I mean, that.
But I did say that last month, and you guys said when the new head coach comes in, he can make his, they can make their own decision. And so, I mean, I, I really hope that you take that into consideration, because the new head coach could come in and let them go, totally affect their lives. But it's keeping me up at night, really, that part of it.
Is your budget changed? Figured on seventy hours?
No, it is not. Let's have fifty-six.
That's what you figured for.
Yes. But it, it, it doesn't really, what I've figured on is operations and the personnel is annual capacity with benefits. So the, that, the hours. Hours doesn't come into play like that. Now, the thing is, is, and this is where I need direction from the board. I need you to be thinking about what you'd like my priority to be. Because if the priority is to reach seventy hours and programming is not the, at the forefront that it was before, then that changes everything. If we're looking at desk coverage, if we're looking at, you know, doing the essential library things, if we're going to be not, because it's, the programming takes a lot of time. Um, you know, what is it? And, and instruction, what is it? I think with instruction, it's like for every one hour of instruction, you've got three to four hours of planning and, um, development. So same goes for a program. So I, I need direction from, from you guys, because I'm right with you. I don't wanna give anyone a, a position and then turn around in six to eight months and go, thanks, but we don't have it.
At, at seventy hours, what is the basic number of hours that it takes just to run the library without program? I mean, just the, the desk and all the, the stuff. I, I think we've seen that somewhere.
But basically, what is it? We need twelve, um, we need twelve stations filled so that library operations are running. So that means the book drops being, um, uh, attended to, books are being checked in and cleaned. We've got people at service desks answering questions, assisting with, so, um, do, uh, and then we've got, so, what if you did twelve times seventy? On the spot math.
Eight hundred and forty hours per week. Does that sound right?
But that doesn't, that doesn't, I don't know if that includes the cafe. So I would say that it doesn't, from the sounds of that. And I do have that spreadsheet, so I can get that number for all of you. I just. It doesn't include maintenance at all.
So for me, um, you know, we're, we're, it feels like we're riding this sort of line with you, Ange. And my guess is it might feel that way to you too, you know, so I mean, we're, we're with you, okay? That, you know, when you're in an interim position, this is part of the struggle and the challenge. It's, you know, you're being authorized to keep the boat afloat.
Don't rip the.
And, you know, and, and we've invited you to be very clear about that. You know, what is it that keeps the boat afloat in terms of staffing and the resources and so forth? Um, but we also wanna be incredibly respectful of the selection process underway. And it may be you, it may be somebody, we don't know that, okay? That's sort of this big question mark out there. And we wanna be sure that that person is in a position to exercise their leadership. In whatever form that may take. And, um, and so this would not be a time to invite the staff to come up with a lot of new ideas and program this kinda thing, you know, because we just should not be doing that right now. It doesn't seem to me. I'm speaking for myself.
And so, um, and this conversation is very helpful for me, because as I'm, when the last board meeting, when we said, okay, we're stepping back. What that meant for me was, okay, we're stepping back organizational structure. We're stepping back and the emphasis is on programming. And that doesn't mean that everything else falls away, not at all. But I think, and, and staff, please, you know, share your thoughts on this one if, but programming was a very high priority. And so I am A-OK. I just don't want you, the board, to feel that, um, we're not pulling our weight if pro, if I come to you the next board meeting and say, okay, programming's gonna be reduced. And, and that's what, you know.
Yeah, it'll only be increased from what we're doing now. I think that's what we were more focusing on. Personally, myself is, and that's what I wanted a little more elaboration for on the in-programming level. Bullet point is, what is the plan to increase it from what it is now? I'm not talking about what we were prior to COVID. What is it going to look like now going forward? At the levels that we're operating at?
Well.
Although you see, there's, there's, there's an essential tension here between keeping the boat afloat, meeting essential needs, service desks and all of that. Maybe moving up to seventy hours. If we do that in an interim, um, we may be looking at being able to do that with more part-time people, rather than full-time people. Augmenting our. It's, it's, it's an, it's a cheap way to run, run things. And, um, but then you have to ask yourself, if someone else comes in or later on, if you're the next director, all the excellent programming that we have done and the outreach to the community that we've done, this particular outreach, that really is reliant upon, it seems to me, professional, full-time staff. That is a big commitment. And are we going to help the funding to operate that way? Um, so I would be really careful not to reintroduce a whole lot of programming at this point, given all of the variables that we're looking at here. You know, and, and again, if someone else comes in or if you'd later, were ready later on to do that. But, but understand what the trade-off is, and it may be an essential trade-off in, in the situation. And, and maybe it's the community that also has to tell us. These are the programs we think are absolutely essential.
And that's where I really.
Yeah.
Like to see it, because here, you know, what, what I'm addressing in this report is the takeaway that, okay, things were going back to normal and how I can make that happen.
You know, we're not gonna go back to the kind of programming we've had and.
Not, not quickly at all. Um, what is it? But in conversations, um, you know, there has been so much change. For me to sit here and say that I have a full grasp of what the capacity is, is not a, would not be a truthful one. So I've got to assess what our staff capacity is. And, and that's what I, that's what I wanna do. I appreciate the conversation, talking about the hiring of the positions. Um, maybe I will pull back on that one and talk more with what, with the admin planning team to see. Because I think every one of us can agree that we don't wanna hire people just so we can turn around and let them go.
And that would be the, the biggest thing. Um, you know, that's something like, we really do appreciate. This year has been just very different, um, on, you know, so many fronts. But that's something that through all, through it all, um, the library, it's an excellent place. You know, the promise that you guys have, that as a community, as all employees and everybody, uh, coming together, it has been amazing. So that's something that, um, you know, if, if we continue then and, you know, focus on everybody making sure that we're not stressing anybody too much as far as we can ask somebody. My, one of my concerns is that we're gonna ask one person to do the job of three people. So I guess that's, that's something in that, you know, as we start on talking about the essentials, we do need to, you know, keep that in mind. And I guess it's a very difficult thing, 'cause it's like, okay, so how do you wanna get back to the essentials, but then don't hire any people? And that's not kinda what we're saying, just, you know, being a little, you know, just kinda keep that on the back of your mind. And maybe the, the balance might be, let's not get seventy hours, if we can wait on hiring anybody right now and just kinda having that, you know, we can just, it's gonna be difficult, but.
Well, and I mean, you know, um, with all the changes and the stepping back. Okay, so all our managers might be stepping in back to their managerial, but it's gonna be a different type of management now. And so that is, the question of capacity is at the forefront right now. I, I don't know what their capacity is yet. Um, but we are working on getting those, that question answered, and so that we can share that with you. And I think that we'll have something, you know, we'll be a few steps further down the trail or, yeah, down the trail comes the next meeting.
We know that we had two years ago fifty-seven employees.
That's right.
Now we have twenty-seven, thirty. The possibility of going to one thirty, forty-two. So we're, we're never gonna go back, well, I shouldn't say never, in the next two years.
We're gonna change the way, what, what our focus and values are. And, um, we're gonna, you know, there's, there's certain programs, like Mini-Con, maybe Hot Summer Nights, and they are mentioned in here. So I, I mentioned those in there. We're not thinking of new and exciting things. We're thinking of the things that, at the capacity that we have now, how can we bring some of those things back? The good thing is, is Mini-Con's off for this year. Only because it's wonderful and it is truly every hand on deck. Um, and then, uh, Hot Summer Nights, Hot Summer Nights was every Thursday night in August. We're thinking about maybe bringing it back two nights, you know? And, and what does that look like if they're outside? The summer reading program, we're thinking about adding one in-person program per week outside and maybe it be intergenerational, so that we can have more staff there to service them and then they can go back and we can go. So things are gonna look very different.
Uh, Ange, there are some programs, I'm wondering, that we might have contractual obligations. Um, and, 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 and looking at your staff capacity to deliver some programs. I'm wondering about, for instance, Recovery Court. We do a lot of instruction there. I'm also wondering about other, our con, our iconic internship. I mean, I don't see how we can, and, and, and have you identified certain programs that we really would like to continue? And what about your staff, professional staff capacity to do that? There're gonna be managers as well now, you know?
So I'm happy to say that before, um, Ari left, he, um, he talked to and kind of, um, shared the joy. Um, we already had, uh, people in training to be, uh, su- support facilitators for Recovery Court. So right now we've got two facilitate, two facilitators for Recovery Court. And, um, what is it, uh, they seem to be okay. I'm the third final recovery court facilitator. But we were, you know, we've got it opened up to the, the staff to say, hey, if anyone's interested, let us know. Ari managed this. Now Ari was a dynamic, or is, uh, a dynamic individual. And he ran that program by himself for at least two years with, with oversight. But he was the one feet on the ground, you know? So, um, I think that it's doable and I think that that program is safe for now. Uh, however, I will be keeping you posted on that one. As for the Arconic internship, um, what is it? It was kinda divvied up into, uh, two major components. Jackie Taylor Tente, um, and I have a meeting with her Thursday of this week. Um, she is the one who handled the, uh, the internship facilitation of it. So she made sure that we got the PR out, she made sure that the, that everyone was showing up and that they were doing what they needed to do, uh, and then the tracking of it. Then that tracking information was shared with Ari and Ari did the grant paperwork side of it. So those two, we believe we've got, uh, everything covered. I by no means feel that I know everything just yet, but I will be talking and asking, uh, for the admin planning team to share with me if they're aware of any, um, programs that may have contractual obligations to make sure that we're.
Saying identify all those first. One other thing, um, in my conversation with the staff, Andy and I interviewed a lot of them. They really did, I think, appreciate the cross-training. Um, as far as getting to know what other people in the library are doing and getting to know other people and becoming friends with other people. But I would just like to say, I, I really, it, it kinda bothers me a little bit that we've got librarians with two degrees working in the cafe or working at checkout and shelving all the time. Now, I, I know they need to know how to do it, but I really think consideration, especially if we're trying to get back to programming that we want and we need those librarians and those department chairs to program. I think that might be one place that you could look at.
So here's, here is the thing that has been the fall down in our structures, uh, since I've been here. And that is siloing. Um, because it starts out, everybody knows how to do something and then they never touch it again for three months. Well, you might have not, you might as well not have trained them, because they're not gonna retain it. What I would like to see and, and, um, what I'd like to see and what I like with the interdepartmental cross-training is it creates a dependency of staff on each other. If you mis-file or miss-shelve your books, then you become aware of the pain you just caused the person who's pulling reserves. Now, you're right, there's different pay. However, if everybody's doing just a little bit, you still have time for programming. You still have time and everyone has a better idea of how well our systems and softwares are working. And what I'm coming to find is that our systems and softwares can be tweaked so that we can deliver, that we've got sharper home tools in everybody's hands. Now, in saying that, I want you to know I am hearing that. I want you to know that the staff have shared that and have shared the fact that they like, that they now understand why one department needs it to be done this way. We are exploring how we can find the balance for that. We're not there yet, but, so I, I appreciate you sharing that, because that's one more.
And I really appreciate you meeting with the staff in the mornings every day. That's a, that's a great thing.
Thank you very much.
Okay, but I do think we need to answer this gentleman's question.
I, we, we wanna go into some other things also, but that's part of it. So, um, that's one of the reasons we're going every two weeks now for our meetings, because of this kinda discussion. Would you touch base on the capacities of the rooms and where we're going on that?
Um, what is it? Okay, the, um, I'm gonna need you guys. Capacity for Sharon Lawson is a hundred, one-twenty, okay? And so with this room opened up this way, it's a hundred and twenty as well?
I think it's pretty close.
Yeah, I think it's pretty close. Um.
Yeah, the whole room.
For, for, yeah, because this is the same sha- size as Sharon Lawson.
And when are we going to that capacity?
Um, okay, so.
Now.
We, we could, yes. If the board.
How do you feel about that?
Well, my feeling is we've been in school all year. Come on, you know? I mean, I've been at school all year long. Did I have COVID? Yes, I have COVID. But you know what? I'm upright, I had my shots, I'm good to go. I think we need to get back to normal. I mean, I think it's time.
I would imagine there's a demand for the spaces as well. I'm curious about that.
So, um, what is it? What I have, uh, shared with the board, or what I've shared with the staff is, um, when the, the mask, uh, became optional for fully vaccinated, the instruction that the staff got was basically now it is your choice, okay? But you also have support in making sure that you feel safe in your health and, and we've got you. If we open up meeting rooms, then the attendees can assess how, um, how many people, up to a hundred and twenty or for this room, up to a hundred, um, how many people and what their comfort level is. However, if they want staff to come in, then what is it? I, and I haven't had an opportunity to talk, talk with Judith, but we should be able to remote in just like Judith is doing today. And we can have one person come in at the beginning of the meeting, make sure that the technology is connected, and then staff can support that way. I do want to say, and you, and you're right, and you've been around children, you know, um, and I don't know if they've been masked, but I can tell you that, you know, you and I interact with the public. You know, I might have twenty interactions a day on a very busy day. The staff could have twenty interactions within a two-hour period. And some people lean in and we have amazing stories at what they share, but that's for a later time.
How does, how does the board feel about?
Why can't the staff come in with a mask on to help instead of remoting in?
I would like the staff to have the option that they feel comfortable. So if they, if they wanted to.
If they feel comfortable to come in with a mask.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, um, as far as I know, um, the way that we're communicating, uh, right now is that if we have someone who is staying, staying for late night meetings, um, it, they're identified, everyone knows who they are. And then if, uh, that person gets, has concerns, they can let somebody know before crunch time. So I think we've got systems in place that will offer employee support and will allow the community to, uh, utilize the spaces.
So how do you feel about?
It's fun. Are we at ha- half-capacity now or?
We're, we max it at thirty-two, um, at six-foot.
Oh.
Spaces, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's about twenty-five percent.
I moved to full capacity. I'd like to make a motion at full capacity.
Is there a second on that?
One second.
Discussion on full capacity.
Keep us posted, I guess, if there's the concern with employees. Because that's something I'm like, you know, it, it is a different time, you know, and I do understand Walmart doesn't require masks and I'm really happy that we're not having to wear masks. On the, on the same token, you know, um, I don't know what, uh.
I don't know about Walmart.
Uh, no, that, that just as an example, but I, anyway, so if there is concerns with that, um, please let us know. Um, um, it's not like, I don't know, we are asking them to be here and, you know, masks is, you know, by, what I've been told is, you know, affect other people and not yourself, um, as well. So it goes into a, you know, big thing, so I don't know.
We need to say, if you've not been, just like the CDC guidelines say, if you have not been vaccinated, then please wear a mask.
Right.
But, but who knows? I mean, my, 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 my position is if the staff is uncomfortable.
Right.
Then they shouldn't participate because.
Yeah.
Personally, I, I'm, I'm against opening up fully in my county right now. But, uh, it should be something that's, uh, left up to the staff. It's, uh, I mean, we're, we're not talking about COVID, we're talking about COVID. So it's just something.
I, I do agree with Stephanie's point. I think that's very, you know, we have to go by the guidelines so we have CDC's, you know? We, we would definitely put it as if you have not been vaccinated, we would require you to wear a mask. Um, and at that point.
We can.
Well, we can, or we recommend.
We, yeah, we recommend. We ask, we ask that you question.
True. And knowing that that's, we're going by the honor system, which kind of goes to your point. It, I mean, we're going to go in circles, but.
Okay, so the, the motion, the motion that's on the floor is a hundred percent capacity?
Yep. And can we full capacity? Yeah.
Full capacity.
At, up to full capacity and that the, uh, staff and the attendees of the meeting decide on their safety.
You know, there's something about that that makes me uncomfortable. I mean, you have to manage your staff and, you know, if, I, I. So here's the thing. If an employee just arbitrarily decides that they're, they don't feel safe and then suddenly they're, but you can't use them. You know, I mean, I.
What do you do if you have the room booked for a hundred and thirty people and the staff decides?
What if they decide even with the mask? That they don't feel, I mean, I just think we need to be careful. I just think we need to follow the guidelines.
Why don't we, can we all think about that and maybe get back to this next meeting? Yeah, I personally, I would like to just do a little more homework and see what other organizations have done. Um, you know, just.
Well, I'll tell you across the county, I mean, we're, we're gonna get some pressure, I would imagine from, you know, all the other, our funding bodies and all that are, they're moving to back to full capacity.
Right, yeah.
And so we, we, I mean.
Yep.
Want to be careful with that.
The county did.
Commission meetings. Commission meetings, we're right on top of each other.
Yeah.
Reprovisions. I mean, we went last week and we're right, wearing the horseshoe and we're.
The county put out an email to all staff saying, uh, goodness, as of, I think they've already done it. Masks are gone.
They have City of Alcoa, City of Mariposa.
And, and that is, that is fine and that makes sense for that interaction. But they don't interact with the public the way we do. So if we go with the guidelines.
A lot more, I mean, they have service desk.
Yeah, no, you, you, you have, you have a meeting coming up tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday.
And it's full, it's open to everybody, right?
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, it's open to the public now.
You don't have, you don't have any controls on anything.
No, no, not, not at all. Um, nobody came last week to the agenda meeting, but it is open to the public now. So, you know, they're not beating down the door to get there. That'll be in June, that'll be June when everybody shows up, when the budget's, yeah.
You got a meeting coming up Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the Governor Lee's latest resolution says business back to usual. I mean, and I, so I think when we need to take the resolution that came out, what our county and our funding bodies are doing, make some smart decisions, but follow what the CDC says. I think you're, it's just going to open us up to a lot of scrutiny if we aren't following the recommendations.
It does open the kind of wormhole that, you know, if we're saying we're going to be open, it's going to be very difficult on you to, you know, give the employee an option to either, you know, we're, we're here to provide services like City of Alcoa. You, you know, you're putting new utilities, you take that customer, you're going to help them.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second on the floor. But we're, I'm going to cut off discussion.
Except Angene char- characterized it as, and the employee gets to choose what safety looks like.
That wasn't part of the motion.
Okay, so.
And I, and, and that's where it started breaking down for me.
That wasn't part of the motion. The motion.
It's just full capacity.
Yeah, the motion's around full capacity.
Full capacity.
CDC guidelines, CDC.
Yep.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. You want to continue that motion or you want to withdraw?
Yeah, I'd like to continue.
Okay, all right, so we will vote on that motion at full capacity. All in favor of this? Put your hand up so we can see it. Okay, all opposed? So the motion carries. Sorry. We can address this next time if.
If I have more information for us next time.
Well, anything can change.
Let me say that.
Right.
One of the things that we realize.
Thank you, staff.
If you look at, at Angene's report, is we have picked up thirty thousand dollars in income because we're opening our buildings and our rooms. The more that we can open them, the more money we get, which is great. Okay, so thank you, I'm going to get off this subject. Let's go, let's go to the Friends and Bruce's report. Oh, okay.
Well, it, it'll be, uh, short and sweet, although because this is the, uh, approaching the end of the fist, fiscal year for us, we have a lot going on. We are firming up some board nominations right now. That'll go to our board, in fact, next week. Uh, we're finalizing our budget, our, our operating budget for next year. Um, and working on a, a plan for cash status. We're starting to revisit and rework about a two-to-three-year-old strategic plan that was completed, uh, twenty seventeen or eighteen. In, and we're, we are updating that strategic plan because we're moving into a, a new operating mode post-candyemic. And we just felt it was timely now to make sure. Now, part of that strategic plan will be things like mask, um, decisions, feature sales decisions. And we are, we are also looking at new people to handle some of our financial and media work. Right now, that's about it, but there's a lot on the platter right now.
Talk, talk about the market.
Oh, well, the community market is, I think, and it's maybe third, third or fourth week now. And, uh, we don't, we don't make much money from the community market. We ask five percent of the, their sales as a donation to Friends. Um, but it's, it's, we have twenty-four vendors signed up, which is about five or six more than we had all of last year. Uh, they don't all show at the same Saturday at the same time, but we're now running the community market every Saturday, nine to twelve, selling vegetables and bagels and all kinds of stuff.
Grass and books.
Yeah. Well, we don't sell books there. In fact, we, we give books away to the kids. We all, we always have a, we all, we, we have a booth there, we have a presence there all the time. And we're handing out bookmarks and books for kids. It's going quite well.
Bruce, we can't say enough good things about the Friends and how incredible they are. It, it's truly amazing. Thank you so much. Angela's not here and.
Angela could send an email and so that she wouldn't be able to attend a real conflict.
She, she canceled her meeting this, this month. And so they didn't, I, I don't think they have a report at all. And as you noticed, they did approve Chris Soros's, uh, contract. And so we're going and moving ahead with that. All right, let's go ahead to whole business. Uh, last, last meeting, we, we asked, uh, to have a letter sent to the newspaper. We asked Susan Schiavel to write it, which she has done. It's an incredible letter talking about the, the positives that Casey had done. And I've asked her to send that letter out to the, to the newspaper.
Thank you, Susan.
It was a great, it was a very nice letter and I hope we can all read it in the paper.
I'm working on it.
She's ama- she's amazing.
Thank you.
You're, you're right.
English professor.
And the other thing that came up in the last meeting was compensation for the interim director. I discussed it with the county and it is our decision on what, what the compensation will be. And all they care about is that we stay within our budget. And so we will, we will go ahead with that. I'd like a quick meeting afterwards and we'll discuss that. The board, board director, so, exactly, we'll go on with that. Uh, moving on to new business. Would you want to postpone that until the next meeting?
Yeah.
That, that's talking about the employee grievance process. Let's, let's move that on to the next meeting or, or two meetings from now and, and go, go forward with that there. Is there any other, did we answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any, any other discussion for today?
The job description, Google sheet, is that something we'll cover next time, next session?
Or the next time?
I'm curious about our timeline of beginning the search and, um.
The search committee is meeting after this meeting.
Okay.
And we will be talking about additional peoples on, on the search committee and, and the, uh, the description has been re- redone. So you guys are doing, they, they're doing a super job. And then we'll, we'll be going through. And then all of this, you can see why we're, why I want to have this meeting every two weeks. I mean, there's just so much going on now, it's just amazing, so. Okay, any, any other questions or discussion? Okay, do I hear a motion for, uh, adjournment? Anybody opposed? Thanks very much.
It's always everybody's favorite motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Susan and Kathy, can I see you over here?
This one of our fifteen years. So did you?